It's my pleasure to call this meeting to order. We'll start with our invocation. My friend Pastor Meyer is trying, he was jealous of my beard. So now he's growing his.
Almighty God, we come to you and we give you thanks that you have given us the privilege of living in this community with such a glorious past. A past of agriculture, a past of space, a past of engineering and tourism. We give you thanks that we have that heritage. We give you thanks for allowing us to live in a community with a future. Our best days ahead of us as we look forward to them. And we give you thanks for being, allowing us to live in this community in the present. We pray that you be with these present leaders as they make decisions based on the heritage of the past but looking always toward the good of the future. Bless their decisions this evening, we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Devine.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome to the Brevard County Commission Meeting on this, the 11th day of April, which is the 101st day of the year, which means you only have 264 days left to procrastinate about all those plans you made for 2017. And on this day, we're going to talk about 1970 when Apollo 13 was launched from KSC and it was to be the third lunar landing mission. It carried astronauts James Lovell, James Swigert, and Fred Hayes. But after an oxygen tank exploded on the evening of April 13th, the new mission objective was to just get the astronauts on Apollo 13 home safely. Their story was made into the movie fittingly called Apollo 13 in which Tom Hanks used the famous quote by James Lovell, "Houston, we have a problem." A famous launch was made right here in Brevard County on this day 47 years ago. So that's your trivia for this evening. Moving into our first order of business, we'll need a motion to approve our minutes from February 21st and March 2nd, 2017.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? It passes 5-0. Going to our first resolution, which would be mine, recognizing the week of April 9th through 15th as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Kim, do you have a whole bunch of people here?
Yes, we have a group of public safety telecommunications who-
Well, I'll wait for them to come down before I read this.
Thirty-two years and another couple of days. Thank you. I tell everybody thank you.
Please. All right. Okay, let me read this. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners has determined that public safety telecommunications are an integral part of the emergency response process nationwide. And whereas the Brevard County Sheriff's Department, Brevard County Fire Rescue, Cocoa Beach Police Department, Cocoa Police Department, Indian Atlantic Police Department, Indian Harbor Beach Police Department, Melbourne Police Department, Palm Bay Police Department, Rockledge Police Department, Satellite Beach Police Department, and Titusville Police Department are designated as public safety answering points under the Florida Enhanced 911 Plan in Brevard County. And these agencies employ over 200 individuals as public safety telecommunications. Whereas the National Emergency Number Association and the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials recognize the week of April 9th through 15th, 2017, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week to acknowledge individuals employed in the public safety telecommunications field. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County is desirous of recognizing the dedication and the professionalism of public safety telecommunications in Brevard County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County does hereby declare the week of April 9th through the 15th, 2017, as Public Safety Telecommunications Week and commends all telecommunications for their dedication to duty, professionalism, and commitment to saving lives, property, and the prevention of crime in Brevard County. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 11th day of April, 2017, I so move.
Second.
We have a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Passes 5-0. Congratulations.
This group represents more than 200 men and women who work diligently day and night and midnights to keep our residents and visitors safe. They're the calm and professional voice on the other end of that 911 call. And they may be asking questions that you don't think are important, but they know that the answers to that is what guarantees the safety of law enforcement and firefighters and the quality of your medical response. So they are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and we are pleased to be part of that system.
If you guys just want to gather around the kitchen or just over this side.
We need to get some gifts if you can. Thank you.
You guys will just come over here. Someone will be moved to this side.
I'm kind of sorry. We're recognizing her side.
That is perfect.
Okay. I might see if I'll do that.
Sorry, hold on.
Sorry, too much rocks. It's too heavy.
Congratulations.
This is Rodney Edwards here. There he is.
Oh, no, I got some things.
Come on up, please.
Boy, my ears are so plugged up, I can't even hear myself.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Resolution, whereas on April 24th, 2017, the Brothers of Eugene C. Johnson Lodge 318 will celebrate 73 years of serving the community. And whereas during the year 1944, 13 courageous and forward-thinking men came together in brotherhood and founded Pride of Melbourne Lodge 318, a Prince Hall-affiliated Masonic Lodge in Melbourne, Florida. And whereas, as of January 3rd, 2008, Pride of Melbourne Lodge 318 was renamed Eugene C. Johnson Lodge 318 in honor of past district deputy and honorary past Grand Master Eugene C. Johnson. And whereas the founders of Pride of Melbourne Lodge 318 and the succeeding members of Eugene C. Johnson Lodge 318 have made and continue to make significant contributions to Brevard County. And whereas Eugene C. Johnson Lodge 318 is one of a few institutions with such a long and thriving history, and today it is one of the oldest institutions in South Brevard County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does unanimously hereby recognize and acknowledge the founding brothers of Pride of Melbourne Lodge 318 and all those who have continued to serve for nearly three quarters of a century for their achievements and outstanding contribution to our community. We encourage all citizens to join the 73rd year celebration on April 22nd, 2017. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 11th day of April, AD 2017.
Do I have a second?
Make a motion to accept the resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Anyone wish to vote no? Passes 5-0. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want to say something?
This is Eugene C. Johnson. I'll let him speak on behalf of our lodge.
Good evening. It is an honor to be here today to receive this recognition. We have worked. You see, I'm shy of this type of apparatus. Once again, I would say that it is a pleasure to be here this afternoon to receive this recognition in the county. We have worked and we continue to work and to work with the young people. And it is our desire and our objective to bring on the young people and to give them a direction. Just two days ago, in our grand session in Jacksonville, a young man that we brought up from an eight-year-old to now is going to college, received a four-year scholarship through what we have been doing and how we have neutered and mentored him. So it is a pleasure for me, Eugene C. Johnson, to be here today because my grandfather is one of the ones that built that particular temple. So we thank you for your recognition, and we'll hope you can be able to celebrate with us. We will continue. We will never give up. Thank you.
God bless you.
Thank you.
Abby Johnson? Let me read this. Whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature. And whereas the state of Florida Water Management Districts and Brevard County are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas Brevard County and the state of Florida has designated April typically a dry month when water demands are most acute, Florida's Water Conservation Month to educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources. And whereas Brevard County has always encouraged and supported water conservation through various educational programs and special events. And whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference when it comes to conserving water. Whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can help by saving water and thus promote a healthy economy and community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of April as Water Conservation Month in Brevard County and is calling upon each citizen and business to help protect our precious resource by practicing water-saving measures and becoming more aware of the need to save water. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 11th day of April, 2017. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Passes 5-0. Congratulations. Would you like to say something?
We'll keep our remarks brief. I'd just like to thank you all for supporting Water Conservation Month. As you know, it's been particularly dry this year, and I believe our governor has issued a state of emergency related to wildfires. So I thank you for setting your body as a model for your citizens, and we appreciate your partnership as we move forward to conserve water. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Farley. I know Laura Lee Thompson's not here. Mr. Champagne, Caitlin Hurley, and we have Kayaks by Bowe here with us tonight. I haven't got to see you in a while, sir. Good to have you. Whereas the Merritt Island National Wildlife Refuge is the seventh-most visited refuge of 563 refuges in the United States with 1.5 million visitors in 2015 who enjoyed watching wildlife, exploring history, hiking, fishing, hunting, birding, and biking. And whereas the economic value of the Indian River Lagoon has been estimated at more than $3.7 billion annually to our state and region, and the protected waters of Merritt Island National Wildlife Refuge are essential for the long-term health of the Indian River Lagoon. And whereas the Merritt Island National Wildlife Refuge provides critically important habitat for over 1,500 species of animals and plants, including 10 animals that are federally listed as threatened and endangered. And whereas the United States Department of Interior Fish and Wildlife Services has approved over $4 million for an exciting new refuge visitor information center to serve as a community conservation education center. Whereas the United States Department of Interior Fish and Wildlife Services does not use appropriated funds for the exhibits and has requested for the nonprofit Merritt Island Wildlife Association to raise the funds and community support. And whereas the Community Conservation Educational Center will benefit the entire east-central Florida community as well as the growing number of national and international tourists seeking to experience extraordinary wildlife that thrives in our nation's most historic gateway to space. And whereas the Brevard County Commissioners and community partners support providing safe and accessible recreation educational opportunities with the goal of fostering conservation of our unique coastal resources, including the Indian River Lagoon. And whereas, the Brevard County Commission recognizes that the new Merritt Island National Wildlife Refuge Community Conservation Education Center will contribute to the economic viability of Brevard County by attracting tourists who are interested in the natural Florida, including our beaches, the Indian River Lagoon, and the St. John's River and our wildlife refuges. Now therefore be it resolved that the County Commissioners of Brevard County hereby recognizes the Merritt Island National Wildlife Refuge and Conservation and Education Center and encourages Brevard County residents to support the fundraising campaign by the Merritt Island Wildlife Association. Done, ordered, and adopted this 11th April, 2017, I so move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? It passes 5-0. Congratulations.
I believe you have a PowerPoint presentation for us, correct, sir?
We do.
Okay.
And thank you very much for giving us this opportunity. My name is Chris Ferry. I'm the president of the association, and these are members of our board. And they give us the opportunity to tell you a little bit about the Merritt Island Wildlife Refuge and the partnership that we have, not only in space and nature, but in wildlife. When NASA acquired the land in the early 1960s, they asked Department of Interior to manage the land along with Fish and Wildlife Service, the National Park Service, and they recognized that there are certain things that the government entities couldn't do, and we formed a nonprofit, as you pointed out, Commissioner Pritchard, for helping the government do the activities associated with the refuge, the Merritt Island Wildlife Association, which we represent. As you pointed out, we have over 1 million visitors annually. The slide says sixth most visited. As you pointed out, it's the seventh. It consists of hiking trails, boat ramps, educational pavilions, a new visitor center, and a seven-mile scenic wildlife drive that we call Black Point. Birders and wildlife photographers are one of the largest things, and for those of you who just enjoyed the 20th Birding Festival, which was an international event that was held in Titusville, was a very well-attended opportunity, and we look forward to supporting those in the future. In addition to birding, eco-tours, we have over $60 million in economic benefit to Brevard County and the surrounding areas, as well as fishing, education, and the different events for the volunteers that support. We're very blessed to have many volunteers that support the Wildlife Refuge, and we couldn't do it without all those helping hands. These are just some of the volunteers. Eric is here with us tonight. He just was out at the refuge this afternoon. We appreciate him, as well as all of us, taking time to support the refuge. One of the things that we're really encouraged about and happy as a part of our new visitor center is to be part of the statewide bike trails, the Coast to Coast Connector that's part of the greenways and trails activity going across the state. Will connect St. Pete to Playalanda Beach, and in about two years, you'll be able to ride all the way across the state, 250 miles, from the Gulf of Mexico to the Atlantic Ocean. We're also, Titusville is going to be the hub for many different trails coming up and down the east coast, as well as across the state. Out at the refuge, we're looking forward to, and are currently surveying, areas to put a bike trail from Titusville. We've just installed a bridge in Titusville, as well as a new visitor center there, and will have the opportunity for people to come into Titusville to rent bicycles and, as a red line indicates, ride all the way out to the beach and around, as the green lines point out, the different hiking trails. So we're really looking forward to having that opportunity with our new visitor center. As you pointed out, it's not also about the wildlife, it's about our community, and we're there to serve the community and provide conservation and education. We constantly have to turn schools away because of the current size of the visitor center and the number of people that come to us, and we're really looking forward to the new visitor center, which will be in the parking lot in front of the current visitor center for those of you who have been out there recently. It'll be an 8,000-square-foot building, opening, we hope, in the fall of 2019 if we get funding, which is always a challenge for all of us. $5.6 million to do the total cost between the Fish and Wildlife Service and, as you pointed out, the activity that we've been asked to do is our association to raise funds for the exhibits, which will be in the exhibit hall, the purple area in the middle, as well as an expanded nature school, outdoor exhibits for, as part of our educational and environmental education program. And for those of you who've been to the refuge know that cell service is very limited and there is no Wi-Fi, and we recognize the need for all generations to have access to Wi-Fi, so we're going to be providing that service also. Community support has been huge. We appreciate your efforts and allowing us to present this to you tonight, and these are examples of other activities, city councils, Titusville Chamber of Commerce, and many different organizations that have given us time to present to them. This is an example of one of the exhibits that we helped to repurpose, the Eagle's Nest that is in the current exhibit. And there'll be 12 different exhibits. These are the themes. We want to encourage everyone to come out, and it's going to address everything, the past, the present, and the future, and all the different aspects of the Indian River Lagoon. And as our scrub jay says, we'll be glad to answer any questions, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, well, now move into the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything that they would like to pull?
I have one item.
You do? Okay, which is?
Sorry, my computer's down, so we're getting that result. Item 2D4, just for discussion.
Okay, any others? Can I have a motion to pass the consent agenda, minus 2D4?
So move.
Commissioner Pritchett makes the motion, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barfield. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It passes 5-0.
Yeah, I'll have to bear with me because my computer has decided not to work this evening. I do have Stockton's book, so Stockton to the rescue. I guess I had some concerns, and I plan on getting with Stockton and Vanetta regarding the audit report for the UF Extension Services. I know there's some issues with the 4-H, and I know the audit was sort of initiated by, I guess, a board member who was concerned about the allocation or the lack of accountability with funds and about the concern that there's a board member on the 4-H that may be an employee of the investment company. And I just wanted to make sure that we were addressing, and I see the responses, but what concerns me a little bit about the response is rather than maybe getting out of the 4-H, because I know the 4-H does do a lot of good, I would rather us come into compliance with, rather than saying to the state that we don't want to do this. Because in recent years, I know there's been some changes in movement with employees and directors and stuff, but there's a lot of good that the 4-H does when it's done right. And so I want to make sure that we come into compliance, at least that would be my recommendation, that we come into compliance, that we try to do what the state requires of us, and make sure that there isn't a board member, and I have no idea who that is, quite honestly, but make sure that if the auditor's recommendation is that the board member shouldn't be a member or an employee of the investment committee, that he's actually voting on whether, you know what I mean? There is a huge conflict of interest, in my opinion. I saw that our response was that we didn't believe that there was, but I believe that there at least appears to be. Maybe perhaps it was UF's response, but...
Right. So the University of Florida is currently addressing this issue with the 4-H Foundation. Because 4-H Foundation and 4-H associations fall under the state 4-H policies and guidelines, the University of Florida is right now working on this issue. I agree with you, and I think the university also agrees with what you're saying. So right now, they're working on that, and as a matter of fact, they had a meeting this afternoon, which I wasn't at, so they are addressing that.
Yeah, it was good timing because I had a couple different people, and two of which didn't even know each other, that contacted my office because of issues or concerns with 4-H. One being a board member and another one just being a person that had paid for membership, but then things that were promised, they're not doing, I guess. And obviously, there's more that I could learn and more that, you know, we could do on our end to get it right, but I just want to make sure we're on top of it and make sure that rather than just, you know, saying we don't want to do it, I would rather see that we were in compliance.
Right, exactly, exactly. So the university's got this.
Okay.
So do you want to make a motion to?
I'll make a motion. That was the only item on the audit reports that I had. Obviously, we've already addressed, and I've spoken regarding the Parks and Rec Audit, but I would make the motion to approve the acceptance of the audit with the understanding that we're going to be on top of it and that we're going to respond in such a way to make sure that we try to do what we can to support the preservation of 4-H and that they do it correctly by state.
You good with that?
Did you get all that?
Second. Anyone a second?
I'll say.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zanardi, a second by Commissioner Barfield. Anyone wish to vote no? Passes 5-0.
Pass is 5-0. Move into public comments.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'm trying to get a building permit to put a carport in front of my garage, so I can keep my scooter on it. I use mostly 70, 80% of the time, and I'm running a, I got 595 feet, and I'd like to get that waived. It's like 10 feet from the county right-of-way, but the county right-of-way is also 15 feet more to the road, so the end of the carport would be 25 feet. I have a 45-foot driveway. You understand what I'm saying? I can show you, I had a survey, I could show it to you on the survey, I had it printed out, if you'd like the copy of it.
So, you're looking for a waiver of nine feet for the carport?
Yeah, they're telling me 595.
$595, so you're asking us if we can waive the fees?
Yeah. I'm on social security disability, I ain't got that kind of money.
Could you give us your name and your address, sir?
Donald Guerin, 585 Patricia Street.
Mr. Chair, I met Mr. Guerin last Tuesday, and so Tad and Mike are working on that. I don't know that the fees can be waived, but we're working on that. I sent them an email, could have been last Friday, so I was a little delayed in sending them the email, but we know what his issues are, and so... Tad, can you talk about the fees?
Good evening, Board. Tad Calkins. The fees, there are three waivers that he would need, variances from the zoning code, and one would be for having the structure in front of the, the front line of the building, the other one would be in the front step-back, and then separation from the building itself. Each of those waivers are about $700, and those are a general fund fee. And then the building permit fee, I believe that he mentioned was...
Thirty-five, I've paid already.
Yeah, about $35. So, we're probably looking in the neighborhood of about, I would say, it'd be about $2,200 for everything altogether.
It's more than make a month.
Can they waive, they can't, can they waive the fees?
I believe there's a provision for the Board to waive the fees if they see fit.
Let me do this, so that you have all of the information. Can we bring something back in front of you on Thursday?
Please. Donald, we're going to take this under advisement, and we'll address it on Thursday at our...
All right, do you want a copy of the survey I've got highlighted, the area and everything?
Tad, do you need a copy of the survey?
No, sir, we have it.
No, sir, we have it.
It's going to be, you know, professionally built, it's not going to be a piece of crap, you know, canvas stuff like that, it's going to be, you know, match the house color and everything.
Okay, thank you, Donald.
Thank you.
Ryan Favalli?
Yes, sir.
You're up. You name an address, please?
My name is Ryan Favalli, and I'm 740 Lojave, Coco, Florida. And just go right into what I want to speak about?
Yes, please.
Okay, sorry, I don't have my notes here. Okay, with your permission, I would like to discuss something that is going on in the community, that I would, that I'm doing with my partner here, Mohammed DeReese, and also the sanctioning body, his name is Mitch Miller, okay? We're trying to put on a mixed martial arts event at one of the rec centers, I believe four miles north of Coco Village. It is the Walter Butler Center, and it is across from, I think, Fair Glenn Elementary, okay? And we're receiving a little bit of, how do I say, I guess we're being blocked a little bit from the operations manager, who makes the decisions for putting on events, okay? And I don't want to, I want to create a ripple effect with what it is that we're doing with this particular event. We don't want to go in there, put on the event, and make income. We would like to create what I call a ripple effect in a more of a positive outreach for the community, so not just to go there to make income and do the things that we're trying to do, but also give back, okay? And I would like to do that through anti-bullying programs, possibly a reduction in crime rate through the mixed martial arts, and all of the discipline and particular things that come along with those associated events. For example, I mentored a kid who was, at one point, on the wrong path in life, and now he's a law enforcement officer, and is en route to becoming a professional fighter. So, what I'm trying to convey to you guys today is that it is something that I believe this man interprets as something that's violent, and would not be necessarily good for youth, and I believe it to be the opposite, and I believe that myself, my partner Mohammed here, and Mitch Miller, the sanctioning body, will also convey that to you, okay? I want to brag on my teammate here a little bit. He's one of those decorated athletes the state's ever produced. He was a state championship wrestler, he was UCF Knight, and he's widely recognized as the man who helped Titusville High break a 15-year losing streak against Astronaut High School, okay? He was on MTC, he's on FOX, he was on The Ultimate Fighter, he was in the WSOF, so it's beyond me, it's the reason why the operations manager would encounter someone like that and not be, as they say, chomping at the bit to have him come in and help do things with the community, and help the youth and reach young adults, because he's one of the few men able to do those types of things. So, we would like to try to get you guys to possibly overturn his decision. That's it.
Yeah, do you have the board?
Steven, will you raise your hand? If you'd go back to him and let him get your name and phone number, we'll give you a call tomorrow, and we'll see what we can do to get information.
Sounds good.
Okay?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mitch Miller.
We are both going to say something on the same subject that he said, but Mohammed DeReese would like to go first before I do.
Okay. Come up to the counter, microphone, please.
Hello, how you doing, sir?
Good. Name and address.
My name is Mohammed DeReese, 1405 Lark Court, Titusville, Florida, 32780.
And what would you like to say?
You'd like, my partner, so we wanted to talk about the MMA event coming, that we're trying to bring to Titusville, Port St. John area. First off, I would like to let you guys know a little bit about myself. I'm currently a volunteer in the community over in Titusville, Florida. I've been volunteering for the past six years, helping the Titusville High School wrestling team, and this past year, I've been helping with youth football, in the ages between 12 and 15. I've been also helping coach a lot of youth guys leaving high school and in college with an MMA club I put together, not for profit, I haven't been charging anybody, I just, you know, help those who want to reach out and better themselves at the sport. I have brought to attention to the north end, Parks and Rec, that I wanted to put on the show, you know, to bring an event to the Titusville area. We don't have a lot of sporting events or anything like that, that people get to get out and go hang out and watch, you know, so a lot of kids get in trouble, a lot of guys go out and do things they're not supposed to be doing, when, you know, we would like to put on events, so that they can come, you know, with their free time, and participate in something positive, also volunteer for Fighting Edge, which is, works with Parks and Rec, and they do free boxing, and they also go out and give, do food drives, and stuff like that, and give back to the community. So, like, what we're doing is not, you know, only, like you said, only for, you know, just one thing. We also are trying to give back, well, we raise money usually at these events to give back to different organizations like Holt's Brevard, and pretty much the city approved it when we wanted to do it last year. The police officers for TPD decided they wanted to help us with the security, and they volunteered to come help out with that, and everything was in set to go forward, but Mr. Davis from Parks and Rec decided that he didn't want to do it from his personal, you know, moral beliefs, for whatever reason, why he didn't want to do it, but my partner, Mitch Miller, he is the representative of the state, and he, his job is to make sure I follow the state's direction on what I'm supposed to do legally, to be able to even hold the sanctioning event, which is a lot more than what the Parks and Recreation's limits and regulations are. And I just wanted to bring to attention what was going on. It's a legal sanction, license under the state event that we wanted to bring to the community, and is getting shot down because somebody's personal belief. And that's all.
Thank you.
If I could just comment on that.
Sure.
First, I'd like to encourage you to talk to the director and assistant director with Parks about your proposed event. We host hundreds of events in Parks and Recreation, we work with hundreds of not-for-profits, so we have a procedure we can follow. I mean, of course, if there's partners like Titusville Police, we'll want to talk to them as well. I can't say that I'm sure that we've done a mixed martial arts event sponsored by or co-sponsored by Parks, so I don't know about that, but we'll be more than willing to talk to you. It just has to be, you know, consistent with, you know, the county's philosophy for safe and, you know, fair recreation, and if you're a not-for-profit, and it, and we can, you know, we can work with you, we will, but I think you need to start with Hector, and the director, Mary Ellen, and we'll be glad to sit down and talk with you and see if it's something that can be worked out.
Okay, thank you, and like I said, last year, I went about the route, and what they told me was that the police wouldn't want it to happen, and that the city wouldn't want it to happen, so I talked to the police department, and they got behind me, and I talked to the city, and they got behind me and approved it, but it just, to that point, it couldn't get passed, because when they went to put it in an event, Parks and Rec didn't approve of it.
Just allow us to verify that, so that we can...
Do you want to just go over there and talk to Vanetta, and we can continue with the meeting here?
My pleasure, thank you.
You're welcome. Mitch, if you want to join them?
I'd like to say something.
Sure.
My name is Mitch Miller, 2125 Feast Road in Melbourne, Florida. I own a company called Florida Combative Sports. I'm licensed through the state to oversee mixed martial arts kickboxing, kickboxing events. I think the whole question is here is, there is no license requirement, there is no approval requirement. I'm licensed through the state to oversee these events, and my job is to make sure they have the correct insurances and everything else that the boxing commission requires. And he's already done events in Brevard County. He did one in Palm Bay, he's done one in West Melbourne. I don't quite understand the roadblock he's run into here, because there's not any kind of municipal approval needed anywhere. I'm the one that holds the license to make it legal through the state, licensed through the state. He's the promoter, I'm the one that makes sure he follows the state rules. So, I just wanted to say, I really don't understand the roadblock. It's a community building, he wants to hold an event, as long as he is, the insurance is not the big deal, I heard him tell me already that the person was concerned about liability. He has to have a million dollars of liability. That's up to me, to make sure he has it, according to the state, and I have to turn those records in to the boxing commission. So, I don't understand the roadblock that he's...
Okay, well, if you get with...
And I'm not sure that it's a roadblock, it's a, is it a compatible use with what the other activities that are going on at the park? You know, I'm not sure that we do gun shows at community centers, and so, you know, it is, you know, the kids that are there, and is it something that should be allowed in the park? But they'll work that out, and then if you, if you don't feel like you have made progress there, then I guess I'm the next step.
I do about 100 shows a year, all throughout Florida, from Key West to Pensacola. They're all 18-above shows, every one of them is 18-above. I mean, these are martial artists, and I just, I've never had a municipality or anybody say, well, we got to approve this, or anything, as long as it's a legal business, which it is legal business, it's extremely regulated by the state, which they come after me if I don't make them follow the rules correctly. I'm only one...
Okay, Mr. Miller, your time's up, but we're going to work with you, so just talk with the folks in Parks and Rec.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
And I would just like to say, Ryan, you did call me, and I had requested a meeting with you tomorrow, so just so, for the record.
Okay, 4A, moving to 4A.
Commissioners, item 4A is a vacating request for a side lot easements in a subdivision in Indian River Isles in District 4. We've received no objections to the request.
Sir, do you want your name and address, please?
Steve Spiro, 5205 Babcock Street, Palm Bay, Florida, 32905. I'm one of the petitioners, myself and my wife, just here to answer any questions, in the event there were any.
Okay. Being the District 4 Commissioner, I have no objection to this.
I make a motion that we grant the petition to vacate.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barfield, and a second by Commissioner Pritchett. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, item 4B is a petition to vacate side lot easements in adjoining lots in the Barefoot Bay subdivision, Unit 1. There's been no objections to the petition.
Pleasure, the board?
Make a motion that we grant the petition to vacate.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barfield, a second by Commissioner Zanardi. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass is 5-0.
Commissioners, item 4C is also a petition to vacate side lot easements inside the Barefoot Bay, Unit 1 subdivision in District 3. There's been no objections to this petition.
I make a motion that we grant the petition to vacate.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barfield, and a second by the almost voiceless Commissioner Pritchett. Anyone wish to vote no?
Evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Item 4D is a request to amend the county's merit system pay plan to incorporate changes recommended to respond to emergency operations and shelter management, and the pay for county employees to work those shelters.
Pleasure, the board. Commissioner Pritchett makes a motion to approve. Commissioner Twaya, you would like to say something?
Yes, some questions. Thank you, Mr. Visco, and thank you for helping me out with some of this stuff, but the more I dug into this, the scarier that this became to me. This is a core function of, first of all, I think it's important how we got here, and that led to this potential change, so I think, you know, we wouldn't be doing our due diligence if we didn't talk to it, talk about it. As you explained to me, that the Red Cross was manning our shelters, and then the Red Cross decided that they did not want to man our shelters. I found out that there was an unenforceable, non-written contract with the American Red Cross, and that's scary, the fact that we are relying on our shelters to be manned in times of need without any contract. So my question is, quite simply, do we have any other contracts like this in times of need, that a service provider has the ability to pull out and leave the county hanging when it comes to those type of arrangements?
Not that we're aware of, Commissioner. I can tell you that the issue with the Red Cross and their supplying people to man shelters is a statewide issue.
Thank you. So, a follow-up would be, if it is a statewide issue, how, I don't understand how we got into this predicament. That being said, as a condition of employment, every application that was open, the last sentence, sorry, every posting says, "In the event of a hurricane, major natural, may be disaster, which may threaten the area, the employment will be required, sorry, the employee will be required to perform emergency duties as directed." So we've... So we've, we've told our prospective employees that in times of disaster, that it is incumbent upon them to work. How then do we not have a backup plan in such an important time to take care of our citizens when they need us the most, that we turn to the National Guard? Which brings up another question that maybe you can help me out here. Are we on the hook for the National Guard for covering up for the services? If so, what's, how many National Guard members? What is their average salary? And when will we know if we will be getting a check to cover the services? Because quite frankly, we didn't do our job as a county and plan for a national, for a natural disaster.
I don't know that. I would say that we did do our jobs, Commissioner.
Commissioner Barfield has something to say about this.
Yes. This Hurricane Matthew, I was in the EOC, is, I was my lucky time to be chairman. But I was in the EOC.
Yeah, and I was thanking you too, buddy.
So let me explain to you what happened. First off, shelters are activated. Red Cross was supposed to be there, Red Cross wasn't there. So the governor was in and he said, "What do y'all need?" And we basically said, "We need, we need National Guardsmen." So immediately they got, by the next morning, started having National Guard come in and they worked the shelters. And Ms. Prosser is going to step in here in a minute, but anyway, that's how we had to work it. The problem I see, and just from my standpoint, is, you know, you can prepare all you want, but when you have organizations you're depending on, you don't know until they show up. And that's just the way it is.
So I would just like to point out, this entire notebook, which is the Brevard County Shelter Book, it's a full notebook, it was developed jointly between us and the Red Cross. It's extremely detailed with regard to plans, which shelters we use, which buildings, which rooms, how many people you need, what their jobs are, all those things that has been planned for years. And up until the moment when shelters were opening, Red Cross was still telling us they planned to be able to provide those workers. It didn't work out that way here, it didn't work out that way in other counties either.
Commissioner Znardi, you have the floor.
I guess my only question, and I agree that in those circumstances, I don't know what you would do, but, you know, I work for a rather large organization that requires us to work as a condition of employment. And we all know, I mean, nobody even argues that fact at all. You sign up for pre-storm, during storm, or post-storm, and you're expected to work. And yeah, you might be sleeping at work, especially if you get, you know, in the middle of a storm or afterwards if you're not able to travel, but that's a requirement of our employ, is to have to work. And given that these things, these events don't occur very often, you know, we're compensated at time and a half, you know, assuming we meet the 40 hours, and they probably would compensate us a time and a half if we were less than that. But has that ever been considered, to make it a requirement for employees to work as a condition of their employment? Or have we ever enforced that?
That is the requirement. It's on every job description.
Right.
Now, our issue has been, in the past, we have attempted to get individuals to voluntarily accept certain assignments for storm, and that's why the pay plan historically had created incentives to encourage people to step up and make themselves available. That hasn't worked for us. So now we're having to go and take the next step and make this a mandatory issue.
I just wonder why the compensation seems that high.
Well, that had been the board, previous board policy with regard to paying people at double time for working the special needs shelters, for example. The level of work that was required there was felt to be very significant. And again, to encourage more employees to step up and assume those roles, the pay plan was built to encourage that level of participation.
Commissioner, let me add a little bit to that. The challenge that comes and what this really addresses is not when we have a Level 1 or a Level 2 hurricane, it's when you have the most serious of hurricanes, a Level 3, a Level 4, and a few times that we've had Level 5 hurricanes approaching. And at that point, a lot of people who would otherwise be their volunteer, quote-unquote volunteers, you know, they have to make that decision between, you know, their family and are they going to be able to, you know, fulfill the commitment that they're making to us? And with that in mind, we tried initially, when we were dealing with special needs shelters, to get employees to volunteer for that duty. There are two departments that they were mandated, so that in fact, if we didn't have volunteers, they were mandated and have always been mandated to man the special needs shelters, primarily out of housing and Human Services and Parks and Recreation. But we tried to fulfill as much of that and always have with people who would volunteer. By volunteering, when you in fact don't show up, you jeopardize your employment. And so what was done was a pay grade was selected at the 814 level in our pay plan and it was offered at double time for those individuals. And so that was the threshold of where we were. When we looked at the challenges that we are now facing and we're seeing, basically, out of our 2,000 employees, 2,200 employees, 1,500 of them approximately have emergency duties that are, they have responsibilities within their departments, either pre-storm, during storm, or after the storm, from utilities to road and bridge to fire rescue, et cetera. But there were 500 or so other employees, while it is in the job description, while we do put it in all the announcements for all the employees, they had never been mandatorily assigned to go into the shelter. And so as you were approaching the area of a 3, 4, or 5 storm, the thought was, and that's why it came this way, it's not the same level of duty perhaps as the special needs shelters or pet-friendly shelters, but it was a way, especially for the lower-paid employees, that it did provide a bit more than what they would have gotten at time and a half. And it was present, and that's why it was presented this way. We are obviously ready, if we don't, if the board chooses not to approve this, then we would look at a traditional time and a half during emergency and continue to do that. So it's really, you know, obviously the board's decision and how you'd like to proceed, and we will be prepared to do that. We've drafted an administrative order that would implement this, no matter what the pay scale that the board adopts, and we've provided that as an attachment to the, to the agenda requests.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Pritchett. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a very significant issue. This will have the impact of approximately $2 million on taxpayers. And yes, only a quarter of that will be burdened from county, but when it's matched by FEMA, that comes out of taxpayers' dollars, taxpayers' wallets as well. Am I reading this right, that certain folks that volunteer at a pet-friendly place where in a, when, will be making close to $1,000 a shift? Is that a fair assessment?
We'd have to do the math on a shift, sir. We're talking about making at the 814 pay range, $20.70 an hour, double time. So that comes out to the 40-odd dollars an hour.
Times 24, yeah.
Depending on the shift, if they were going to work, you know, whatever hours you're going to define a shift, is 8 or 12 or 24 hours. That's a function of how many people we have in the shelter at that time.
Okay. So, and secondary, I don't like how this was written. In fact, I think it was written extremely poorly. You have folks that will be making $1,000 a shift and other folks that with these new proposed changes will actually be making less money. So my question to you is, how do we deal with the folks? How are we incentivizing? I think that's what, you know, the pay plan says here, by paying folks less money than what they were making before this change. Is there, is there a parody when it comes to that?
No, sir, there's not a parody when it comes to that. What we're talking about here is, this was an opportunity to create some simplicity in the pay scale. There was a degree of consistency. Yes, some people will be making more, some people will be making less. But for the most part, for those folks who are going to be in the special needs shelters, which is where our primary demand was, those folks are going to be making more.
One follow-up. My understanding is they're making $41.56 an hour right now, and the proposed change would be $41.56. Is that incorrect in special needs?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So there is no change to the special needs?
Right. Well, we say making more, it's a making more in relative, relatively speaking to those folks who are working in general population shelters or who are doing other non-shelter-related storm work.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Did you second that? We have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett to accept this. We have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Barfield. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Pass is 4 to 1. Commissioner Tobias being the nay vote. Okay, moving on to 6A.
Commissioners, this item is an item that you've actually seen previously twice, I believe. The, in January of this year, we, the board approved an easement for All Board Florida for an aerial crossing as well as others, more was involved than just an aerial crossing across the Pine Street Road right-of-way in Cannaveral Groves, adjacent to the 528 Road Corridor. The, the All Board Florida has asked to come back and make some modifications to the easement language that would make it not quite an exclusive easement, but not quite just a general easement either, something in between. And they proposed language, which has been reviewed by staff, and we've brought it to the board for your consideration. In keeping with the statutory construct for this particular easement, it will require a supermajority for the board in order for this to be approved. And the, the petitioner or the All Board Florida representative is here to speak and to answer questions. You really do have three options, are outlined in the, in the agenda.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Laura Young. I'm with the law firm of Dean Mead, 7380 Morel Road, Suite 200, Vieira, Florida, 32940, representing All Board Florida. I'm mostly here for questions, if you've got any questions that I can answer, but I just want to highlight something that Mr. Denninghoff said. It's, we're not changing the type of easement, it's still a non-exclusive easement. It will remain a non-exclusive easement, that was a requirement for the county. It has to have a non-exclusive easement. And, and All Board Florida agreed to that. What we're doing is putting some procedures in place to make it much more clear on paper how that relationship goes, that the county still has full authority to maintain the roads, maintain the structures, widen the road, do whatever it needs to do in that easement area, as long as it doesn't interfere with the improvements that All Board puts in there. So we've crafted some language with the help of, of Mr. Denninghoff's department and the county attorney's department to make it, put in a process that we think can work very easily for both the county and the applicant as well. So I'll entertain any questions. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Commissioner Pritchett?
I'm just going to move to approve this item, I think it's good.
I'll second.
Any comments? Okay, I'd like to weigh in on this. I would, we have a, we have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett and a second by Commissioner Znardi. I would like to see this, this item tabled. I've been involved with the All Board Florida for however long we've been going back and forth with this. And I would, I would suggest that we should, we should resolve the overpass situation on Pioneta Causeway before we address this. That would be my recommendation. So if you guys want to go forward with your, your motions or withdraw them, it's up to you, but that's, that's my input. Commissioner Barfield?
I'd like to ask Mr. Denninghoff, what's the status of the other Pioneta?
The status of the aerial crossing for the Pioneta Causeway overpass over the FEC Railroad right-of-way is that we've completed a, an appraisal and we've submitted a, an offer to FEC for them to consider. And they are reviewing that. They've had it for about a week or almost a week and a half perhaps at this point. And they, we've been in touch with them since they've had it and they verified that they are reviewing it and they're trying to expedite it. We have not heard anything back from them. They have made it clear that if they don't like the appraisal, they may get their own appraisal. If they do like the appraisal, they'll, they'll sign the agreement and send it back to us. And if they, or if they want to negotiate something that maybe wouldn't require a whole new appraisal, they may try that. In any event, when we do hear from them, we'll be coming back to, to the board. They had initially expressed an idea that perhaps it would be something on the order of $300,000 value. Our appraisal did not reach half that. So, so I expect we might hear from them about the amount, but in any event, that's where it's at.
Before you vote, I'd like an opportunity to reply.
Sure, absolutely.
No, and I just, I just want you to consider that the fact that those two projects are not linked together, they're separate, two different entities, not in control of each other. We don't have any negotiating power for that portion. There are two separate, two separate groups of folks that we're dealing with, two different projects, so I would really urge you to, to consider that and not link the two together.
And I would also like to remind the Commissioners that this is a supermajority vote, so if they don't get their supermajority, then they'd be better off with the table.
Mr. Chair?
I agree to that.
Before we, before we vote, can, can you help me with the rationale a little bit for why you'd like to table it until...
Yeah, simply put, we, we have no bargaining position with this and we have an appraisal of about $140,000 and they're saying it's going to be more like $300,000. And so with this table, we have some bargaining.
I, I think I'm there. My understanding is, help me here, I've got a nice attorney up here telling me that those two entities aren't related. That was my understanding. Is there anything that I'm missing?
Well, they are individual items, absolutely. But it's, the two, the two principles are the same, Brevard County, All Board Florida. So you can, you can make your own deductions from that.
I'm just not sure that this helps get anybody any sort of negotiating power for the other project.
Well, it may not, but I certainly know it won't hurt. So, pleasure, the board.
But I do agree, if, if the vote isn't there, then I would prefer to table it and I would request that respectfully.
Are you requesting it to be tabled?
No, I'm not. If, I'm saying if you're, if I don't get four fifths, please table it.
Can I ask you?
Sure, absolutely.
Is there any, if we were to table this for two weeks, do you have any idea, Mr. Denninghoff, how long that process normally takes?
I do not. They, we've, we've never dealt with the FEC on the acquisition of a, of an aerial easement. They did provide us evidence that they do have those in other DOT districts. They did not have any in District 5 and from the DOT. So this is pretty, sort of groundbreaking for us, I suppose, but...
Would you expect in the next two weeks to hear something? Or you have no idea?
I would be surprised if we had it in two weeks. My, my suggestion would be that we continue, if we want to table this, probably use the word to continue it to a date certain, to a regular board meeting. If we have the information for the overpass at that time, then we could do it, take care of perhaps both at, at that point. And if not, then we could continue it again, if that was the desire of the board.
Okay. And in the abundance of caution, is there, is there any, if we were to table this for, say, two weeks, does that have any impact on your timetable as you move forward in one way or another?
I'm not 100% sure. Certainly, two weeks probably wouldn't hurt the project, but again, I'd urge you to consider the fact that they're, they're two separate entities and, and we'd prefer to get it approved today instead of having me come before you again.
Well, I, may I...
Absolutely. Absolutely.
In an abundance of caution and to the deference of the Chair on this one, it would be my hope that we would see your lovely face here in two weeks and we would table this. If there is nothing impending on this, I don't understand what the two weeks potentially would cause. So my support would be with tabling this and I will leave that up to your discretion.
Commissioner Pritchett, you have the floor.
I would think the table does override then a regular motion, correct? So I would rather do that than to, just to have this not go through.
Commissioner Isnardi.
I was just going to say, we can talk in circles, but if there's not four votes, then we should just move to table to save everybody the time and aggravation. Although I still don't quite understand why we're, if they're two separate items and we don't get any real leverage, I don't understand why we're holding them up, I guess because we can, but I haven't heard a logical reason from staff or this Commission as to why we're holding them up. But that's just my opinion, but in order to, I guess, save this minor issue that you want to fix, then I would suggest tabling too. I'd support that.
Would you like to change your motion to the table?
Sure.
Okay, Commissioner Pritchett makes a motion to table this item. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, six two.
Commissioners, one moment if you would to clarify, the two weeks would be the next Board meeting, which I think is on the 25th of this month is the time, would be the continuance date.
Correct.
Thank you.
Six eight two. Who's doing the release resolution?
Mr. Whitton.
Sorry about that Commissioners. This is a release of a performance bond for the Vieira development in District Four. They've completed all their work on this particular project and so this normal procedure would be to release the performance bond.
I make a motion, we adopt the resolution and release the performance bond.
A second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barfield, a second by Commissioner Isnardi. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is five zero. Six E one.
Commissioners, six E one is an approval of an exception to your venue policy. Oftentimes, we have state and federal grants that require a venue that's outside of the county if litigation occurs. Most of the time, we never have litigation with those granting agencies and most of the time, it's just simply a formality to bring it back to the Board to waive that policy. And so we're asking that you allow a blanket waiver to your policy on venue within the county for federal and state grants.
Pleasure of the Board. We have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, a second by Commissioner Barfield. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is five zero. We have no cards for public comments. Passing to Board reports, Mr. Whitton.
Mr. Whitton, Mr. Fire Chief is coming, System Fire Chief is coming to talk to you about a burn ban as we're having some issues, as you heard the lady who accepted the resolution talk about the state of emergency. And so he wants to talk to you, Chief Burns, wants to talk to you about a burn ban.
Good evening Commissioners. We're requesting action from the Board to implement a burn ban due to the current heightened wildfire conditions. Furthermore, would ask for a chance to revisit and possibly modify the current ordinance on our burn bans in the future. Due to the wildfires in 98, the current KBDI is set at 700. Since that time, we've realized that certain situations have come that are not addressed by the KBDI which have increased fire danger. The Governor has instituted a statewide state of emergency due to over 100 wildfires that are currently active right now. The current burn bans are in place in Polk, Seminole, Osceola, Glades, Okeechobee, Nassau, and Henry Counties. We ask that you institute this burn ban currently at the rate that we are at of above 500 and that we would lift the burn ban when we reach the average of 450 once again. There is no fiscal impact.
Pleasure of the Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just seeing this.
Yeah.
And I hate to, I have no idea what KBDI is. I don't know whether or not it's better the higher we get or better the lower we get. I think it would be very premature to make, I mean, I'm sorry, this was literally just handed to me. This was not in our agenda. I understand it's a state of emergency. Does this have any, maybe she should be asking the attorney this question, will this have any impact on the constituents of Brevard County past the national disaster or the statewide disaster that the Governor just issued? If this is emergency and solely for the statewide emergency, or will this have an impact of after that statewide emergency is lifted?
Currently, we're at above 500. The scale is from 0 to 750.
Okay.
If we drop and we go into a burn ban right now, there would be no impact except for a few people who are asking for prescribed burns. At this time, we would stop those prescribed burns. Does that answer your question?
I still don't, I'm sorry, I still don't know. 0 to 750, I got that. Do I want a 0 or do I want a 750?
Sorry. 0 being the best, 750 is extreme fire conditions.
Okay. And right now, we are, I'm sorry, is it pleasure of the Chair? I'm sorry, this is all news to me. Right now, what are we at?
We're at about 500, a little over 500.
Okay. And is there a ban burn since we're a little over 500?
No, Brevard County's ordinance calls for a burn ban at 700.
Okay.
The rest of the counties that I named are set at 5.
Okay, this would permanently lower it from 700 to 500 or just for this time of emergency?
Just for this time of emergency. We need to come back to you and adjust the ordinance at a later time.
Great. Thank you for that explanation.
Do we need a motion for this? Mr. Knox?
Yes.
Okay.
You do.
Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion that we grant the request to implement a current burn ban until the index reaches an average of 450 for Brevard County and modify the ordinance to decrease the drought index point to 500 at which Brevard County burn bans go into effect in the future.
Do we have a second?
We have a second.
Commissioner Barfield makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is five zero.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Whitton, do you have anything else? Mr. Knox?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barfield?
Of course I have something.
Good deal.
Just want to report, Commissioner Smith and myself went to, with a number of economic development people, went to the National Space Symposium in Colorado Springs. We met with a number of companies, I mean, I met with probably, I think it was about 18 different companies. A number of them interested in either growing their services here or bringing new opportunities here and it's very, very fruitful. Interesting thing, talking to Blue Origin, I think originally they were going to build a facility of, I think it was 250,000 square feet. Now they're up over 750,000 square feet and they should be reaching a million square feet before it's all done. And that's right out here, which increases the amount of people they're actually going to be hiring there, which increases a lot more money going into the economy. There is a lot of movement in the commercial space, a lot of activities with smaller launch vehicles, smaller spacecraft, and a lot going to be happening here at the Space Center and in this area, and a lot of support organizations such as Krug, Arug, and a few other companies too. So very good experience, even though it snowed about 10 inches while we were there, but it was a good experience. That's it.
Mr. Tobias?
No report, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Isnardi.
Yes, I just wanted to thank those members of the community that came out to our Town Hall meeting that we had on the 4th. We had a good meeting of the community. Palm Bay covers District Three and District Five, so I know the other Commissioners were invited, but I certainly understand why you...
We were invited, but we couldn't make it.
What's that?
We were invited.
Yeah, that's what I said. I wanted to make mention that you guys, everybody was invited, but you know, I understand you were out of town and also too, it's not your district, so I could understand that, you know, anyway. We had a pretty good turnout, I guess, made it over 100 people came.
Wow.
We had a lot of engagement with the residents and I just wanted to thank not only my staff, I'm sure Commissioner Tobias wants to thank his staff as well. They did a very good job of keeping everything organized, keeping, you know, the sign-in sheets, so we have now good email addresses that we can give them updates on what's going on in their district. But it was a very good turnout and again, I plan on doing something like that again in the future, so hopefully you guys can make it. And I know I saw some of your staff there, so I know that you got an idea of what we talked about, but it was interesting, you know.
They said good things.
Yeah, some of the questions were what I expected, but they were good questions nonetheless. So I just wanted to make mention of that and thank my staff personally. They're awesome. They all came and they all didn't have to, which I thought was pretty amazing. It's a good testament to their commitment to the office and to the district, so that's all I have.
Commissioner Pritchett.
Yeah, it's going to be hard to talk through all this, but I received an email from our County Attorney, Mr. Knox, yesterday about the zone, an ordinance already written out and it kind of hit me. And so I want to discuss a couple of things. I know we're working through a budget and I know that everybody said everything's on the table, but as far as I'm concerned, killing District One isn't on the table. And I just want to remind everybody a little bit of the history of this. About five years ago, you can pull up the 60 Minutes program, we can do it if you'd like to, and it's a horrible watch of what they did to our district up there. We got hit with the space program. We got hit with the economic fall of the housing market. Something else that happened, you know, we're the county seat, we moved all the county facilities to this district. There's great growth going here. All of the incentives are going to the south end of the county and we had nothing. Every three houses, you could walk up and you'd find an empty house. Population was moving out. It was incredibly terrible. And we had, and there was nowhere to get funding. We were in a county funding crisis at the same time. And so we came up with an idea of doing the North Brevard Economic Development Zone and all that did was recreate any new businesses that came into the area to start putting it back in. And we're not where we need to be yet. We're not where we were, you know, and you drive up your stair and see some hope in the area, but we're nowhere near where we need to be. We're not even out of the woods. And in here, we satisfied the purposes for which it's formed, nowhere near that yet. And so here's my situation, is I have a community, I got this, I sent it out to a couple of people, and I already have a stressed district up there, like, you know, if this happens, we're in big trouble. So what I'd like to do, number one, is I want to make, just bring this out, I want to make a motion to deny this, number one, because I don't want to do this to my community at the time. I don't think we're anywhere near discussing pulling the zone out. It has a time limit on it anyways and it's just now started to get funding. We've brought in OneWeb, we've brought in Blue Origin, these are all actually District Two funds. We're sharing the love here with the community. And if we didn't have these things coming in, we'd still have empty houses, we'd be lowering ad valorem taxes. So this zone is actually doing its purpose and it hasn't even really got to the place yet towards really doing a good justice for District One. And at that time, there was a lot of things going to different districts and this is one of the things that came up to our district to help bring some relief and some funding and some hope back to our community. So on that, I would like to make a motion, number one, to deny this, just to give relief to my district. And then I've got one more thing I'd like to bring forth to our Commission. So I make a motion right now to deny.
Yes, I don't think it's on the agenda yet.
I've just got it right here and I would just like to make a motion to...
It should be on the agenda.
Yeah.
It does?
Yeah, and we'll address this when the time comes.
Okay, well, one other thing too, and when I worked in the city, it tied us, Phil, and I know I'm bringing this up, but we weren't allowed to just have ordinances made through the staff without a consensus from the Commission or the Council at the time because it would just tie up the staff time. And I have a feeling Mr. Knox is not very inexpensive. So I would like to maybe make a motion that before we have the County Manager or legal do a formal ordinance, that we have consensus of the Commission, that it's something we would like to have done, just so that we're not using staff time, which is kind of expensive. I don't mind having the conversation and if we don't have a consensus, I don't think it's necessary to use staff time that way to draft up ordinances. That would be my motion.
Again, we need to...
I just have a question of either Mr. Knox or Mr. Whitton. Is there a policy, do we have any sort of policy about that? Because I have the same concern. All of a sudden, we have a new ordinance thrown at us or modifications of an ordinance that we didn't know anything about. And I think that's something we need to, as a Board, you know, say, please go do that.
To my knowledge, you don't have a policy in place that says before the drafting of an ordinance or a resolution that it has to come before the Board.
Mr. Knox, would you like to weigh in on that?
I'm not aware of any such policy either.
Well, I'm kind of thinking along the same lines, I've got a blinking light over here. I'm not a politician. I've been on this Board for two and a half years and whenever we, the Commissioners, decide that one of us has an inkling or a notion that they want to forge a resolution, they talk about it amongst ourselves and then we direct staff to bring it back as a resolution and then we vote on it at that point in time. So, you know, even if you weren't particularly in favor of it, you directed staff to do it so that you could have a full conversation and be well-versed in the subject matter when it came before you, so you could talk about it and make a wise decision rather than have it thrown at you at the last minute without a lot of time to talk about it. So maybe what we should do is consider creating a policy to do such a thing. Commissioner Isnardi, you have the floor.
I would just caution that you probably want to be very careful doing that. You know, I myself have brought one ordinance, so I'm guessing that this is directed at District Three. I think when you, we were the ones that were elected and when you're stifling, now if Scott Knox or any other attorney, anybody has an issue or if even our manager, I would hope that they would be able to say no to a Commissioner before they would say that you can't put something on the agenda. This is why there was some issue before. We have brought things that have been just thrown on the agenda at the last minute. Sometimes it's our fault, sometimes it's not, sometimes it's staff's issue trying to get something done quickly. I don't think there's ill intent, but that was why I wanted better controls on throwing things on for poor Sally on the agenda. I think if we get that under control, you will have ample amount of time to review an agenda item. That issue that we got via email is not on our agenda, so I know that that could be something that would come, but that's not anything that we would have to review quickly now to make a decision on. I think that we have to be very careful when we say that something, we are going to stifle the ability to be able to put things on the agenda, given that you may actually gain more information or have the chance to review it once you look at the resolution, once you look at the legal opinion of it. And if it becomes a problem, I would hope, because the Attorney does work for us directly, doesn't work for management, works for us directly, and we were the ones that were elected. I think it's scarier at the thought of staff being the only one allowed to put resolutions on the agenda as opposed to us. You know, we were the ones that were elected to implement or to enact policy and they implement. I'm not saying, again, I don't want to talk in circles, but I would just be very hesitant to say... would just be very hesitant to say that we're not allowed to put things on the agenda without the consent, because if I ask you, okay, I want to put this new policy in place that we can no longer work more than 36, employees can't work more than 36 hours, and then you guys all talk about what a horrible idea it is because employees won't be able to work a full 40, for example, then I, then I, then the onus is on me to try to, or you all say no, but I have a very compelling case to why you should listen.
Well, and you can still direct staff.
Direct staff?
To, to bring an ordinance forth, that we would consider on the next, next...
Not if you don't give consensus on whether or not you can do it.
No, 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 and that's not what we're saying. What we're saying is that we should vet it here, and then direct staff to bring an, an ordinance back that would convey what you're looking to do. You want to restrict to 36 hours or whatever?
Of course, that's not, I would never, that, that was just a hypothetical.
I know, but I'm using that as, so, just because we didn't think it's...
I don't think that that's what the intention was with the initial discussion, I think the intention was that commission had to agree to put something on the agenda.
I wouldn't agree with that.
That's not true.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, it's, it's not that we can't bring something, it's just I think it should be a discussion before I get something from the county attorney who spent hours on it, and I, I have, I, there's just no way I'm, I'm gonna just be anywhere in agreement with killing my district. And so I would have loved to have a discussion, and I, I didn't even mind it when we individually tried to bring something forth written for us to talk about and, and to work through, that's fine. The only time I had trouble with that was when I got Friday afternoon, 2 o'clock, and I didn't have time to prepare for it for Tuesday, when I was new on the commission. But I think that we just should have the conversation, and see if it's the will of the board, three, at least three people, and then direct them to go write an ordinance, or we can come around with something drafted on paper that we can look at. I'm not saying any way, shape, or form that we can't bring up a discussion of something we'd like to bring forth, because that always should happen. I just don't necessarily think that these should get drafted without a consensus of the commission.
Commissioner Barfield, you have the floor.
We already have the process, it's called legislative intent. We make a motion to, for legislative intent, and we direct the county attorney to go write the ordinance and brings it back, and if I'm correct, I mean, that's, that's how we work it, isn't it, Mr. Knox?
Sometimes it works that way, sometimes it doesn't, sometimes we have the ordinance ready to go, and you get the, you actually get the title of the ordinance with legislative intent.
But we'd much rather know now, we can discuss, okay, we want to send it back, go direct it, then we have it, instead of, we can help orchestrate at that point.
Commissioner Tabia?
Thanks, let's call a spade a spade. I asked for this ordinance, first of all, not a resolution ordinance, to be drafted. I believe it was direction of the chairman that mentioned all resources that were in general fund would be actively looked at in order to fund roads. Now, that didn't happen up in the meeting that we just had there, where we continued to hand out dollars to charities instead of funding the need of transportation, but it was the direction of the chair that said all resources need to be actively looked at. That ordinance right there was a ability to grab almost $3 million and bring to our infrastructure and our roads that we heard over and over in a dire need. Now, I'm, I'm, I'm fully aware that if I would bring that up, which by the way is not on the agenda, and it, I haven't, I, I got that back, I haven't had time to review that yet, because I'm still working on the CRA workshop that is coming up, but to stifle the conversation on something that is a direct order of the chairman of the board, I think does not reflect well on the, the direction that the, the chairman of the board asked us to go forward. So, not that I know whether this will pass or not pass, but it's incumbent upon us to look at all our resources, and by not having an ordinance to potentially look at how we could recapture some of those funds, I don't think we're doing our job as, as, as county, as county commissioners, and as far as, you know, staff goes, if they can justify that something else was put to the side, was in dire need, then maybe that would be apropos, that was asked by my office, and you can public record request, weeks ago, I said there was no hurry on that, I just wanted, as I got to that point, because following your direction, I wanted to be prepared, but if we go down that road, I think we need to be very careful. I have two attorneys in my office that, that will be more than willing to start drafting ordinances and resolutions to bring up for discussion, so I'd really like legal opinion as to how that would impact our ability to move forward with those type of, those type of resolutions or ordinances, if, when they're generated out of, I think, I think it's a Pandora's box that will decrease transparency, not be good for District 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5. So, again, I take, I, I take credit for asking for the ordinance to be drafted, I have not put it on the agenda, I may put it on the agenda, I may not, but right now, my full fork, focus will be on CRAs, because that takes more money out of the general, general fund. But clearly and singularly, that was, that was asked to be drafted of staff only because of the potential resources that could go into our transportation infrastructure.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Mr. Tabia, I have no problem with you having this opinion or wanting to bring forth this issue, I don't. My struggle is, is tomorrow, yesterday afternoon, I received a completed ordinance that's, that's talking about dismantling the zone, and I had no idea it was coming, and if, if you would have brought forth your information and we would have discussed it, again, I don't have a problem with you having that opinion, sir, or bringing it, but a fully-written ordinance by our county attorney without conversation, it just, it really just, it's, something's not right with it, it just hit me funny. And I'm, I'm not sure that any of us should be hiring outside legal to do it, I don't mind you bringing this stuff, and you've brought them in before for discussion in the past, but this, this just little piece of paper coming at me yesterday just was very uncomfortable, something about it just still isn't hitting right. And I really don't mind you having that opinion or having a discussion, I don't want to stifle anybody with their opinion or discussion, but I, I think to the, the, the piece of paper I got, this, this well-formed and done, I, I think it's a lot of use of, of staff time without a conversation.
Sorry, they're, they're...
Sure.
That is not on the agenda, I have not requested that to be on the agenda, my intent of asking for that to be drafted is so we didn't get into this CRA issue where we were dropping ordinances in a timeframe that other commissioners were saying this is too soon. So, in due diligence, and I, I didn't, I had this conversation, you know, with Mr. Knox about what public records meant, and I asked that, for this very reason, you know, that maybe the, the, the individual that asked for it could look over it, review it, before, you know, it was blasted out to everyone, but I have no intent of taking this issue up until we have dealt with one way or another CRAs. I ran on dismantling North Brevard Economic Development Zone. I, I spoke, many, as many of us ran on, you know, other, other issues, so this is not a surprise, I wanted to get this out there at some point, give everyone time to, to, to look at it, to make their arguments why it is good or bad, but, and we're in a public media, so I have no intent of putting this on the next agenda either, I just wanted to have it ready, so we could have a good in-depth discussion whether this was the best way, or those resources could be used in another fashion. So, I, I just think that any time we limit someone's ability to, to, to discourse, I just don't think our, any taxpayers...
I don't think that's anywhere in our intent here.
Well, all right, just to put a final...
I can finish one more thing first, though.
Go ahead.
But if, if this is, and we're gonna have it for discussion, I need time, because you think we're gonna have a crowd at CRAs, I promise this place can be full, and I, I need time, because people have to rearrange their schedules and come in, because our zone, District 1 especially, you won't find anybody there that doesn't support it, because it's, it's about one of our only lifelines right now for bringing life back to our district, and it's working.
I would just like to suggest to my fellow commissioners that we've raised some good points tonight regarding the introduction of ordinances and resolutions, I don't think any of us would want to stifle anyone else's ability to discourse, and, but at the same time, I think that there's something that just doesn't feel right about this, so maybe as, as we think about it, we can come up with what that might be and, and come up with a solution. My board report, first, I'd like to report that I went to Washington DC two weeks ago and met with the assistant to the secretary of the Air Force, the subject matter was bringing Battlefield Airmen's Training Center to Patrick Air Force Base, we're on the short list of eight, and, excuse me, we scheduled, I think, an hour meeting, we were there for about an hour and 45 minutes, he had a lot of interest in what we had to say, this would be huge for us. The Air Force has said that they're going to, going to award this program to either one to three bases. So, if one base got it, it would probably be about 1,200 airmen coming in, so 1,200 families. If they divide it up into three, it's going to be in the neighborhood of 400 each. He wasn't clear whether it would be one, two, or three, but he said it could be one, it could be three. But he had a lot of questions for us, we talked about the fact that we have three rivers and an ocean for them to practice ocean or water rescues, we have Avon Park that they can practice land rescues, and he was very, very interested in the fact that Palm Bay has, what is it, 600 acres, that, that shooting range out there, and they could use, they have, the, the Air Force already has use of that, and I might mention that we already have a portion of the 902 rescue staff at Patrick. One other thing that he pointed out to me, which was very concerning, that there will be another BRAC, which is, I don't remember what the acronym is, it's base re, base removal or realignment. So, Patrick Air Force Base is on the short list of that too, there's 23% of the bases in the country that are underutilized, that's going to be the criteria for the BRAC, and Patrick is one of those that's underutilized. Of those 23%, they will pick 5%, not 5% of the 23, 5% of all the bases will be impacted. So, if we can add the Battlefield Airmen's Training Center, that would help utilize, bring us up into full utilization, so it would be a win-win if we can get this, so hopefully that'll, that'll come to fruition. And last week, I went to Colorado Springs with Commissioner Barfield and a bunch of people from the EDC, I spent, excuse me, as I lose my voice, I spent two weeks spending a lot of time in flying incubators, sometimes called airplanes, and now I'm paying the price. I can't hear out of this ear, I got a lot of sinus problems, but that was also fruitful. We spoke with a lot of very influential people, higher-ups in companies like SpaceX, Blue Origin, and what was the other, the satellite, Telsat, and I don't remember, but there was a whole bunch of them, and it was very productive. I went last year as well, and this year's was much more productive, we heard an awful lot of positive feedback from these companies about bringing their businesses and increasing their businesses and increasing the size of their businesses, so that was very positive. On the negative side, we got official word, I don't know that it's absolutely, well, it's official, we're not getting the Blue Origin Engine Building Company, whatever it was called. Blue Origin, as we know, as Commissioner Barfield just said, they've expanded their footprint there to over 700,000 square feet, they've changed the market here in Brevard County, out of all the thousands of rockets that have been launched in Brevard County over the last 50 years, not one has ever been built here. Blue Origin is going to change that, they're going to build their rockets here. Now, it would seem to me to be a perfect fit, especially to all the people that tell us and say, and like to say, that we shouldn't offer economic incentives to these companies because they're going to come here anyway. Well, got news for you, Blue Origin is not coming here to build their engines. Tell me that that's not a natural fit. It is a natural fit, they should come here, we want them to come here, we tried to get them here, there is in fact a large acre, a large parcel right next to where they're building their rockets, that would be available to them to build their engines, but they're going to Greenville, South Carolina, folks, because Greenville, South Carolina had a lot more incentives to offer than we did. So, that's the bad news, but the good news is, we're still vital, we're still vibrant, and we're still attracting companies. So, that's my board report, this meeting is adjourned.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.